Good morning, welcome to Harden County Commissioners Court. Today is Tuesday, August twenty-third, two thousand twenty-two. It is ten a.m. and all members of the court are present. This meeting is called to order. If everyone will please rise to the invitation by Commissioner Young, followed by the pledging allegiance.
Dear Lord, I want to thank you for today and all of your many blessings. Let us always seek your will and give us the courage to do what is right by our citizens. Be with us today as we conduct the business of the county. In Jesus' name, pray, amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Commissioner. Item number three, approve the minutes of the August ninth, two thousand twenty-two regular meeting as presented by the county clerk, Connie Beckman.
Second.
That motion by Commissioner Kirkendall, signed by Commissioner Roberts, any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Item four, consider approval of request to cancel all registry claims from August ninth, two thousand twenty-two, and approval of cash statement as presented by the county treasurer, there for Mac Williams. Good morning, Ms. Mac Williams.
Good morning. I'm asking the court to release me of the liability of one million, four hundred thirty-seven thousand, two hundred forty-one dollars and ninety-eight cents. These are the vouchers, county bills, and payroll-related expenses that were approved on August ninth. On our cash report and general checking, we have fourteen million, three hundred eight thousand, four hundred eighteen dollars and twenty-three cents. In tax pool, three hundred twenty-two dollars. The total in cash funds are fourteen million, three oh eight, seven forty, twenty-three. The tax pool rate today is two point one six, and the bank did increase and give us credit back to July for the excess interest of point five oh. On the back of your report, I gave you, uh, shows the current month's interest that we're earning in tax pool with the money we have there.
Move to further discussion. And motion by Commissioner Kirkendall, signed by Commissioner Cooper, any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Thank you very much. Item number five, authorization to pay county bills as presented by the county auditor, Angela Gordon. Good morning, Mrs. Gordon.
Good morning. Our pre-approved expenditures for August tenth through the eleventh are six hundred and eight thousand, one hundred and twenty-six dollars and eighty-four cents. Pre-approved expenditures for August the seventeenth are twenty-four thousand, nine hundred sixty-nine dollars and thirty-nine cents. Expenditures for Commissioners Court today is one billion, one hundred and three thousand, nine hundred sixty-six dollars and sixty-nine cents. A list of an additional bill is two hundred and eighty-three thousand, nine hundred seventy-eight dollars and thirty-two cents for a total expenditures and transfers of two million, twenty-one thousand, forty-one dollars and twenty-four cents. Gross payroll for August eleventh was five hundred and eighty-five thousand, six thirty, six hundred thirty-five dollars and seventy cents, and the total transfers for that payroll is seven hundred and twenty-two thousand, nine hundred sixty dollars and forty-three cents.
Need to pay the bill, second. And motion by Commissioner Cooper, signed by Commissioner Roberts, any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Members of the court will, uh, allow it. Let's move down to item number eleven. We have some people here who, uh, are interested in this item. This is on the resolution. Consider adoption of resolution twenty-two dash twenty-two, calling for additional measures to secure the border, stop the invasion at the border, and protect our communities. Give me just a moment and I'll share the screen and fill that resolution up for everybody to see. This is resolution twenty-two dash twenty-two, and I'm going to read this off, and then anybody who would like to make a comment may do so. This is a resolution calling for additional measures to secure the border, stop the invasion at the border, and protect our communities. Whereas the preamble to you, to the United States Constitution outlines the chief responsibility of the federal government is to ensure domestic tranquility and provide for the common defense. And whereas Article Four, Section Four of the United States Constitution clearly states, "The United States shall guarantee to every state in this union a republican form of government and shall protect each of them against invasion." And whereas Article Four, Section Seven of the Texas Constitution clearly states that the governor of Texas shall be the commander-in-chief of the military forces of the state, except when they are called into actual service of the United States. He shall have the power to call forth the militia to execute the laws of the state, to suppress insurrections, and to repel invasions. And where- whereas cartels exploit weak and unsecure borders for their own power and profit to the detriment of our communities. And whereas cartels act as paramilitary and narco-terrorist organizations that profit from trafficking people and drugs into the United States. And whereas the United States has a drug epidemic whereby tens of thousands of Americans die every year, and specifically, Harden County has a major health and public safety issue with methamphetamines, which greatly impacts our communities, our families, our jail, our court system, and other legal resources. And whereas the U.S. Customs and Border Patrol reports that CBP agents seized one hundred ninety-two thousand pounds of methamphetamine at the southern border during the year two thousand twenty-one. And whereas the ongoing border security crisis is not acceptable and has resulted in a security threat and humanitarian disaster with overwhelming consequences to the residents of the state of Texas. And whereas numerous Texas border counties experiencing, experiencing local disaster situations as a result of inadequate border security have passed declarations and resolutions calling for further action and security on the southern Texas border. And whereas the Harden County Commissioners Court desires to express its support for those border counties and to express its desire for stronger border, border security measures which impacts all of our Texas communities. Now therefore, be it resolved that the Harden County Commissioners Court, number one, recognizes our southern Texas border as suffering an invasion, and number two, recognizes and affirms the sovereign and unilateral authority explicitly, explicitly reserved to the states, respectively, under Article One, Section Ten of the United States Constitution, and Article Four, Section Seven of the Texas Constitution, to defend themselves against invasion, which has been exacerbated by the federal government's failure in meeting its constitutional obligation to ensure domestic tranquility, provide for the common defense, execute the laws, and protect each state against invasion. And number three, supports the state-led efforts of Operation Lone Star and the expanded operation authorities available under Article One, Section Ten of the United States Constitution, and Article Four, Section Seven of the Texas Constitution. And number four, requests Governor Abbott to take necessary steps as allowed under Article One, Section Ten of the United States Constitution, and Article Four, Section Seven of the Texas Constitution, to secure the Texas border and stop the invasion at the border, including the actions by paramilitary narco-terrorist cartels that pose a huge risk to our communities. And number five, calls upon the federal government to uphold its duties to adequately secure and protect the borders of the United States. And when we vote, this will be adopted this day, twenty-third of August, two thousand twenty-two.
Move to further.
Second.
Have a motion by Commissioner Kirkendall, signed by Commissioner Roberts, to approve resolution twenty-two dash twenty-two. Any discussion? At this time, if anybody would like to speak, please raise your hand and, uh, or unmute yourself, and I'll be glad to recognize you. Mr. Smith? Go ahead, sir.
Thank you, Judge, thank you, Commissioners, for allowing us to come in here and speak today. I'm the King County Attorney and bracket, located in Bracketville, Texas. Um, you know, the situation at the border we're at, our county is very rural with, with, you know, mostly ranch lands. Um, currently, my county is, we're prosecuting over five thousand illegal trespassing that's occurring. The property owners in this county alone have suffered assault. They've been shot at, they've been burglarized. Thousands each day come, are coming through the border, and they're not stopping here. They're going to larger cities, metropolitan areas. The amount of drugs that are coming through is enormous. So I, I appreciate your Commissioners taking up this resolution and considering it. Uh, I'm here with our county judge as well, County Judge Telly Shagian. And I think he's going to have a few words to say as well, that's supportive of this.
Yeah, good morning, Commissioners. Uh, it's, it's a joy to see how everyone operates across the state of Texas. I appreciate you letting us join in with you. Uh, our county attorney, Smith, is correct in all of his statements. Uh, we have been inundated and invaded. Uh, they're coming through here, uh, at the rate of four to five thousand a month. It's undetected. And we have, um, he, his family owns ranch land here that's had aliens caught on it. Uh, they drive by our front door of our, we live about seven miles north of Bracketville on Main Fair Affair, and there's nothing to have two or three, uh, run, uh, uh, driveways, uh, every day. Uh, sometimes it's more, sometimes it's less. But the one thing that we need to assure to you that it has not stopped. And hopefully through legislation, hopefully through action by our, by the federal government, and hopefully through action of our, our governor, who is, uh, trying to do everything he can to stop it. We, we need everyone's help, and we appreciate your participation. We appreciate your recognition that, uh, we are all counties in Texas and that we all need, uh, protection. Because if it's not, as Brent said, they're just flying through here and they're coming to a neighborhood near us all. So we appreciate your, uh, participation and you passing this resolution today.
Thank you all for, uh, taking the time to speak with us. Uh, on behalf of the Harden County Commissioners Court and the citizens of Harden County, we are, uh, you're in our prayers every day and, and God bless you. And anything else we can do to help you, uh, please call on us. Thank y'all very much. Does anybody want to say anything to the judge or the county attorney?
Just thank you very much for, for your participation.
I just want to ask for context, just for the court's knowledge.
Sure.
Um, I talked to Brent last night on the phone, and, um, I looked up Kenny County. I'm not familiar with it as, as obviously Brent is. Um, their population is less than four thousand people. And so they've got five thousand current criminal trespass cases. Now, that doesn't talk about any other cases he has pending in his court. That is just criminal trespass cases involving illegal immigration. We don't have five thousand pending cases and a population of over fifty-five thousand people pending right now. And that's every case. I don't think we have more than a thousand pending in our office at this moment. And I know we don't have more than four pending upstairs in District Returns Office. So that is strictly just criminal trespass cases that him and his office is having to deal with on a daily basis up there. And so just for context, what's going on, it's, it's, it's madness. So I just wanted the court to be aware. I, I looked at all that last night, and it's mind-boggling.
Thank you.
And I told Brent that if there's anything my office can do to help, he's got my cell phone number. We don't have as much resources as all the other, you know, much bigger counties than we do, but anything we can do to help, I told him we'd be willing to help him anyway.
Absolutely.
So, thank you all.
All right, uh, we have Julie Clark that wishes to speak. Good morning, Ms. Clark.
Good morning, can you hear me okay?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, perfect. Thank you so much, Commissioners, and thank you, Judge, for allowing me an opportunity to hop on and also share our experience. I am actually the county chair for Medina County. We are a hundred and six miles from the border. And let me tell you, what we see on a daily basis, um, would just really disturb everybody who is trying to raise a family and live a, a regular life that we no longer, um, seem to be able to on a normal basis. There have been one point three million illegal aliens since January of this year. Since the border has opened, there have been over five million illegal aliens coming to this country. Yes, drugs are, um, a huge, um, threat to us. It's what we see on a normal basis, but this actually goes outside just the drug cartel. We have human trafficking. We have young kids who are being given to strangers, um, distributed across the country. Um, it's alarming, the daily basis of the sheriff chases and the Border Patrol, um, is a common occurrence on the side of our freeways as they're, um, taking in these illegal aliens. And unfortunately, they're not taking them back to Mexico to put them back in their country. They're actually taking them to process center and releasing them back into our country. And most of the time now, they are given money, they're giving different opportunities and transportations throughout this country. They are using these people and giving them IDs so that they can vote in our elections coming up. I mean, this is so alarming. We had the biggest drug cartel bust in Hondo, Texas, the end of last week. It was so big, our sheriffs weren't even involved. It was actually done by the DEA. And so I'm just telling you, there are so many threats. It's not affecting us, it's going to affect every county in the state of Texas. And it's time for us to take extreme measures and get our border closed if we're going to protect our, our own counties, our children, and the state of Texas. So we truly hope that you guys move forward to help, um, make a ban so that we can get our borders closed. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Ms. Clark, thank you very much. Uh, next we have Sheena Rodriguez, who is asked to speak. Go ahead, Ms. Rodriguez.
Good morning, Judge McDaniel and Commissioners. Thank you guys so much, um, for, for allowing me just a few moments to speak. Um, my name is Sheena Rodriguez. I am actually president and founder of Alliance for Safe Texas and Secure the Border. Um, and, and I, I wanted to just kind of echo everything that Brent, um, and that Julie both, uh, both said. Um, while I've been all over the border, uh, the Texas border from El Paso all the way down to the Rio Grande Valley, um, you know, I do live in the metroplex area, I actually live in the DFW area. And one of the things I want to highlight in, in, in response to just the sheer numbers, like Julie said, of what's come over the last nine months, just this fiscal year alone, over the Texas border, that is, we have two hundred and fifty-four counties in the great state of Texas. That is much more than almost all but seven counties in the state of Texas, population-wise. And with regards to what's happening in the metroplex areas, because again, they're not just staying there in Kenny County or, or, or along, you know, the, the banks of the Rio Grande. They're coming through, um, and it's impacting every single one of our two hundred and fifty-four counties. In the metroplex areas, I live in Tarrant County, we've had over a sixty percent increase in fentanyl-related deaths. Um, and, and, and in neighboring Collin County, that sheriff has cited over a four hundred and fifty percent increase in, uh, in drug-related overdoses. And that's just the drugs. That's not including the criminal cartel organizations, which, uh, uh, they are in every single county. I, I promise you, they are. We, we, it, it's been known here in Tarrant County, um, the gangs, the shifts in the gangs, uh, the MS thirteen in particular here in Fort Worth, uh, is just skyrocketing. This new eighth gang that is also starting to infiltrate here in the area, that's all directly related to the border. Uh, Tarrant County, DFW area usually teeter-totters between here and Houston, um, with, with, with the sex trafficking capitals, um, unfortunately. And, and, and that is, and always has been directly tied to the border. But all of these issues are not necessarily new, the numbers, um, you know, the drugs, the, the gangs, uh, the human and sex trafficking, um, but it is just exploding at an unprecedented rate, at, at a rate that's just uncontrollable. And our law enforcement on every level, just, it, it's, we're struggling, we're struggling. We're not even keeping above water, uh, even in the metroplex areas. They're being dumped, you know, in San Antonio, Houston, and here in the DFW area, um, as far as the sheer numbers. So we're all being impacted, and I, uh, God bless you guys for taking and considering this, uh, adopting this resolution to show that we are a united Texas and that, you know, when the federal government fails to do what it is supposed to do, um, us as the state of Texas is going to have to set up to the plate. So God bless you guys and, and thank you for, for giving me a few moments of your time this morning.
Thank you, Ms. Rodriguez. Does anybody else wish to speak? Is there any other discussion among the members of court? All right, we will vote. All in favor of the motion?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Thank you all again for taking, uh, the time to join us today. I just want to add that, uh, I reached out to County Attorney Smith yesterday. Uh, I've been told that there may be a few people that were in opposition to this resolution that would come speak today, which they have every right, and we want to hear from anybody that, that opposes anything we do. Uh, I reached out to County Attorney Smith and asked him if he had anybody that might want to speak and let us hear directly from them exactly what they're dealing with every day so that it's not something that we're, uh, seeing on the news or being told by some third or fourth party person. We're hearing it directly from people who live on the border as to what they're dealing with. And, uh, I was told they could have a bunch more, and I told them I thought if we just had two or three people that could speak and let us hear what they're dealing with every day, that would let, uh, not just us know, but everybody present know, uh, the reason that this resolution is necessary. Anything else? All right, well, thank you all again for your time. If y'all'd like to stay, you're certainly welcome, and if you'd like to go, well, that's fine as well. Y'all have a good day.
I gotta get back to court, Judge, but thank you for having us today.
Yes, sir, thank you all for coming.
Thank you all.
All right, we're going to skip down one more time. This, uh, will be item number twenty. Item number twenty, to set public hearing to receive citizen comments regarding Mr. Paul Watts' request to close a seven hundred fifteen foot by fifteen foot section of roadway called Magallion Road located in Precinct Two. Mr. Kirkendall?
Yes, sir, court, uh, Mr. Watts is here. Uh, we have nine-one-one here. This is a issue that Mr. Watts and I have been working on for about seven months together. And, uh, this is a section of Magallion Road that's very narrow, uh, having incidents with, uh, drug paraphernalia, needles being found on the property. Again, it's a very narrow road. Mr. Watts, uh, has interest, uh, in his grandkids' safety. Uh, looking at the appraisal district, Mr. Watts does own the property. He's even been paying taxes on the roadway. Uh, the transportation code allows us to shorten a road as a Commissioners Court at the request of the property owner. That's what I'm here to do today. We, uh, if we shorten the road, uh, that is magallion between Highway ninety-two and, uh, FM twenty-nine thirty-seven, uh, we'll have to rename that front portion of road. It affects two houses. Nine-one-one has been, uh, very gracious to help us with that. Uh, one of the things we would look at is, uh, on that entrance from ninety-two to the dead end, it will become a dead-end street, uh, that we rename it Madison Drive, uh, at, 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 out of regards for, uh, President Madison, the chief architect of the U.S. Constitution. That's why we chose that name. And so, uh, that's what we're here to do, to ask for a public hearing, uh, to, uh, shorten that road and to also rename it, and I'd like to do that at the next court if we could.
Can we do that during the regular meeting on the thirteenth of September at ten a.m.?
Yes, sir.
Okay, that would be our first item on that agenda is to hold that public hearing, and then we'll go back to the regular.
September thirteenth?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
September thirteenth at ten a.m.
Mr. Watts, thank you for being here.
Thank you.
Yes, sir, and you're free to leave if you need to. And, uh, nine-one-one, do y'all have any other comments? I know we're going to make it Madison Drive, and then the portion coming off twenty-nine thirty-seven is just going to be a private drive.
So we'll know next, the thirteenth?
Yes, sir.
Thank you, brother.
Thank you.
I have a motion by Commissioner Kirkendall, signed by Judge McDaniel, to set this public hearing on September the thirteenth at ten a.m. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. All right, we're going to go back to item number six. We have Martin Gonzalez and his team here from Tech dot. They wanted to come up and address the court today and the public and just kind of have a quick little workshop with us about some items of interest that Tech dot is working on in Harden County. Mr. Gonzalez?
Um, well, good morning.
Good morning.
I appreciate the, the opportunity to come and, and, uh, visit with you all. I wanted to bring really the, uh, the, the, the team that represents, uh, Harden County that can assist Harden County for Beaumont District. Um, as I mentioned, I'm Martin Gonzalez. I'm the district engineer for the Beaumont District with Tech dot. And with me today, I have, well, she's sitting right there, look at her. Sarah Dupre, our public information officer. Dave Collins is our area engineer over, he is the area engineer over Jefferson County, Harden County, and, and Tyler County. Um, I recently did a, an organization change in, uh, on the district. Uh, he used to have Orange County, uh, but, but I modified that to kind of have that a little bit, the corridor flowing a little bit better on sixty-nine, so, uh, put Dave over, over Tyler County and, uh, and the new orange area engineer, give him orange, jasmine, a lot more stuff than y'all care to hear about. But, uh, but Dave is responsible for all construction, maintenance, uh, and operations within those three counties. Uh, so he will be your local contact as far as any issues that, that come up with any of our construction projects, any questions that you have with regards to progress of, of projects within the area. If you're interested in, in, uh, in pursuing some sort of project, uh, within Harden County, Dave is the local contact that I would encourage you to, to be the first person that you reach out to. Okay? Um, my expectation of my staff is that Dave is, you know, each area engineer is responsible for being the contact with the county commissioners and with the county judge. So that's my expectation, and I just wanted to make sure that you all, uh, knew Dave and, uh, got to meet Dave, and also Stephen Singleton. He is, uh, the maintenance supervisor for Harden County. And same thing goes with him. He is over responsible for all the maintenance of our roadway. So as we start seeing, you know, potholes, uh, edge drop-offs, things like that, concern, uh, maintenance issues with, within Harden County, uh, Stephen is the person responsible for those things. So I would encourage you to, uh, to reach out to him if there's any issues from a maintenance standpoint that, that we need to be looking at and addressing. Um, and again, you know, Sarah, uh, she's the one that handles all of our public involvement needs. If you start getting updates for projects or things like that, uh, Sarah does a great job of, of keeping everybody informed. So any issues that come up like that, you know, of course, uh, reach out to Sarah will be putting all that information out. And then, of course, me, as the head of the district, I oversee, uh, eight counties and, uh, you know, three hundred and eight employees and all the contractors and everybody else, so I'm.
That's all?
That's it, yeah. So I'm responsible for, uh, for overseeing all the construction, operations, maintenance, uh, and just local government affairs for the district. And, uh, just happy to be here today. Uh, there's, uh, just, I don't know if there's any specific questions that you have of us with regards to any of the projects, uh, you know, of any interest, but, uh, we'll be happy to, to be able to try to answer some of those questions for you. Uh, in addition to that, we will be sharing with, with county judges, uh, a map that shows our current projects in your area plus future projects in your area. And that's something that we're going to start sending out so that everybody is, uh, is aware of what's going on.
Sir? I'll say, I had interaction with Dave on an issue on four eighteen. That was fantastic, I appreciate that.
Appreciate it, sir.
And Stephen is a joy to work with. He works very well, we're in Coons, so my foreman speaks to him a lot about different things. And, uh, want to brag on Stephen, he does an amazing job, and, uh, it's a joy to work with him, so.
Awesome.
Yes, sir.
Glad to hear that, thank you.
I second that. I called him yesterday and talked to him about some stuff, so I appreciate everything that you're doing, and thank you.
Yeah, and I think we should, you should give him a raise.
Well, I appreciate that.
Mr. Cooper, anything? Mr. Roberts? Um, I'm going to introduce you to Ernie Cook, right back there on the back corner.
Ernie, yes, sir.
Uh, everything goes as he plans. He should be sworn in as the Commissioner in Precinct Four, January the first. So, uh, good for him to put some names with some faces and y'all see him as well. And, uh, Martin, you've been here, what, a little over a year?
So I've been in the Beaumont District for about two and a half years now.
Oh.
Yeah, I know, that's kind, that's what I said too. Uh, no, just kidding. So, uh, I've been with Tech dot for about twenty-two years. Um, uh, this is my fourth district. I started in the Wichita Falls District, and then I went to, to the Dallas District for about four years, and then I, I moved over to the Paris District for a little bit over three years. Then I had the opportunity to come here to be the Director of Maintenance, uh, in April of two thousand twenty, and, uh, served in that position for about a year, and then was selected to be the Deputy District Engineer, and, and then later on became the District Engineer. I've been in this position for ten months now, uh, as the District Engineer. Uh, time flies when you're having fun, right?
Yeah.
Uh, but looking forward to, uh, to being here. Uh, I'm enjoying it. I think we're going to be doing good things in the Beaumont District, and, uh, and, and really, uh, the reason why we wanted to do this is so that we, so you all know, obviously, who, who works in this area for Tech dot, want to have a good working relationship with, with our counties. Um, that's, that's our goal, building good projects for the, for the residents of this area, for the, just the residents of Texas. And just have a good communication.
We want that as well, and we appreciate it. I was just going to say that when Martin came and he was telling me where all he'd been before in the positions, and he's been kind of climbing the ladder at Tech dot, I said, well, you're not going to be here very long. There's like the last couple guys, and he, he promised me that he was going, he was going to commit to a certain amount of time in the Beaumont District, and, uh, he's done so, so far, and hopefully he'll continue. Uh, I like everything that I see coming out of Tech dot and, uh, these changes that you're making and the fact that you're here and, uh, talking to us, making sure we know who everybody is and who to contact if we have an issue. We appreciate that. We have not always had that, and I'm not bad now than anybody. Y'all just get busy, and we get busy, and, uh, it's, it's very important that we have a good relationship. So thank y'all for making sure that we have that.
And it's been a breath of fresh air to have you in Beaumont, I think.
Thank you, appreciate that.
All of you, appreciate you. Anything else? All right. Y'all have a good rest of the day. Thank y'all for coming.
Appreciate it.
All right, item seven, discussion impossible action to set salaries, expenses, and other allowances of all county and precinct officers. Let me get to that item real quick. We have the, uh, public notice that was, uh, published in the SGB. Also, it was published on our website, I believe. Misty, was this on our website? I believe it is. And also on social media. We have a motion by Commissioner Cooper, signed by Commissioner Kirkendall. Any further discussion regarding item number seven? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Item number eight, discussion impossible action to ratify the property tax. Item number eight, discussion and possible action to ratify the property tax revenue increase reflected in the fiscal year twenty-three budget. Mrs. Gore, is this something that you'll read off, or do I need to read it?
You can.
Okay, I thought that would be your answer.
Yes, sir.
All right, this is to ratify the property tax revenue increase reflected in the fiscal year two thousand twenty-three budget. The two thousand twenty-two, two thousand twenty-three Harden County budget will raise more revenue from property taxes than the two thousand twenty-one, two thousand twenty-two budget by an amount of one thou- I'm sorry, one million, two hundred and ninety-four thousand, five hundred and fifty-six dollars, which is a six point zero eight percent increase from the previous year's budget. Property tax revenue to be raised from new property added to the tax roll this year is four hundred and thirty-four thousand, five hundred and seventy-three dollars. I'd like to add, out of that one point two million, probably, uh, I hate to fill a number out there, but I'm gonna say probably at least seventy-five percent of that has to do with the wage increases that we approved. At this time, we entertain a motion. So, we have a motion by Commissioner Kirkendall, submitted by Commissioner Cooper, any discussion? This requires a record vote, I'm gonna start with Commissioner Cooper.
Aye.
Commissioner Kirkendall?
Aye.
I'm for. Commissioner Young?
For.
And Commissioner Roberts?
For.
So, the motion passes unanimously. Item number nine, discussion and possible action to adopt the fiscal year two thousand twenty-three Harden County budget. Let me, uh, share this on the screen real quick. All right, this is the item that we went over earlier during the public hearing at nine a.m. The proposed fiscal year two thousand twenty-three budget that was filed by me on July the twenty-ninth proposes a total revenue for the Roden Bridge General Jury and Interest Consenting Funds in the amount of twenty-six million, three hundred and sixty-five thousand, five hundred and fifty-five dollars. Since that date, we have made some changes to the budget in revenue and expenses. As I said during the public hearing, this has to do with some corrections that had to be made, and that total amount is thirteen thousand, nine hundred dollars, which, uh, Mrs. Gore will read off each line item of those changes to us in just a few minutes. That, uh, brings our total to twenty-six million, three hundred and seventy-nine thousand, four hundred and fifty-five dollars for the budget that we're looking to adopt today. And at this time, Mrs. Gore, if you'll go ahead and read the changes, and I've had, I have those pulled up on the screen for everybody to see.
In the general fund, we're increasing revenue in the health department certification classes by two thousand dollars, the accounting fees by eleven thousand, nine hundred dollars. We're increasing expenditures in the commissioners' court financial administration line item by five thousand, five hundred dollars, insurance, general law, liability, and property by eight thousand, four, four hundred and twenty-nine dollars. JP four bond expense increased by a hundred and eighty, JP six bond expense increased by eighty. The sheriffs, the law enforcement, and the salaries in the deputies by three hundred dollars increased, FICA tax increased twenty-three dollars, retirement forty-five dollars, and workers' comp by four dollars. We decreased expenditures in the jail by the dental insurance by two hundred and seventy-six dollars, the mop insurance thirteen dollars. Health service department, the travel and training ins- expense decreased by four thousand, one hundred and thirteen dollars. We increased the expenditures in the health department certification classes, the dues and subscriptions. We created a new line item by one thousand, six dollars. Instant healthcare, the office supplies increased by two thousand dollars. We decreased the expenses in the agrilab extension agents' office supplies by seven hundred and eighty dollars, and we created a new line item in her budget for an internet service by seven hundred and eighty dollars. Office equipment rentals increased by seven hundred and thirty-five dollars. For our total expenditures, increase in the general fund for thirteen thousand, nine hundred dollars. The lateral Roden Bridge Fund fifteen decreased expenditures in Roden Bridge Three by seventy-one thousand, four hundred and seventy-four dollars and twenty-eight cents. The county attorney pre-trial diversion Fund twenty, the revenue decreased by six thousand, nine hundred and six dollars. The expenditures offset by salary assistant five thousand, six hundred dollars, the FICA tax four hundred and twenty-eight dollars, retirement eight hundred and fifty-seven dollars, workers' comp two dollars, state unemployment tax ten dollars, and supplemental debt nine dollars.
Thank you very much, Mrs. Gore. Is there any commissioner or any official present, department head or elected official present that has any comments, questions, or concerns regarding the items that Mrs. Gore just read off, or anything at all regarding the fiscal year two thousand twenty-three budget? Anyone at all? All right, if not, I'll entertain a motion on item number nine.
Legal motion.
A motion by Commissioner Roberts, and a second by Commissioner Young, to adopt the fiscal year two thousand twenty-three Harden County budget as presented. Any discussion? I just want to add one more time how much I appreciate Mrs. Gore, Mrs. McKenny, Ms. Cook, Ms. Finn, Lisa, uh, I'm sorry, I already said Lisa Finn, Steve Smith, all of the elected officials and department heads, uh, for working so hard to make sure that this budget, uh, was, was a pretty easy process. We called every department head and elected official in, had a workshop. It was a fairly easy process, and thank y'all, uh, for working so easily together to make sure that it went this way. Any other discussion? If not, this requires a record vote, and I'll start with Commissioner Roberts.
Yes.
Commissioner Young?
Yes.
I say yes.
Yes.
And Mr. Kirkendall votes yes. Commissioner Cooper?
Yes.
The, uh, item number nine passes unanimously. Item ten, considering possibly approved an order to adopt the tax rate of zero point five four oh eight three five per one hundred dollar valuation. The debt service, the debt service tax rate is point zero zero eight three two two per one hundred, and the maintenance and operations tax rate is point zero five three two five one, I'm sorry, yep, two five one three per one hundred. Uh, we went over this earlier during the public hearing, I'd like to go over it briefly again. The, uh, proposed tax rate is zero point five four oh eight three five per one hundred dollar valuation. The notice that went out to the taxpayers shows that this is an increase, I want to highlight that for you, and I want to say that I disagree with that, but the legislature makes us put that out, and so we did. The current tax rate is point five five, uh, I have that here somewhere, don't I? Yep, right here, point five five six seven seven. This is a decrease in the property tax rate of point zero one five nine four two, or a decrease of two point eight six percent in the tax rate. The average home state value for two thousand twenty-two is one hundred nine thousand, nine hundred and ten dollars. By decreasing this tax rate, uh, anyone who has a property value of one oh nine nine one oh would be a, uh, would see a decrease in their county property taxes of ninety-five dollars and eighty-four cents. Of course, a higher property value would see a larger decrease, or a lower property value would see less of a decrease. Now, this is just your county property taxes, this does not have anything to do with school taxes, ESD taxes, or any other taxes. This is your county taxes, and if we adopt this tax rate, you'd see about a hundred dollar decrease in your tax bill from county taxes. Any other discussion regarding this item by the members of the court?
Other than the fact the legislature makes it very hard to explain.
They do make it difficult, but, uh, that's just how it is. They think they're doing something good, I'm sure.
No tougher.
Second. A motion by Commissioner Kirkendall, submitted by Commissioner Roberts, to approve the tax rate of zero point five four oh eight three five.
Commissioner Cooper.
What did I say?
Me, he made the motion.
Commissioner Cooper made the motion, and Commissioner Roberts submitted it.
Yes, sir.
How's that? One more, uh, record vote, starting with Commissioner Cooper.
Aye.
And Mr. Kirkendall?
Aye.
I'm for it. Commissioner Young?
Four.
Commissioner Roberts?
Four.
Item number ten passes unanimously. So, we have an order to sign, have we already, uh, we've taken care of that, so we'll get that published. All right, moving on to item number twelve. Consider approval of request by Alex Parker, floodplain administrator, to name an unnamed private road, Southern Lane, located in precinct three for nine-one-one addressing purposes. I just want to say that, uh, there was a different proposed name on your draft, uh, agendas that came out, and I contacted Commissioner Young and asked her if they would please consider a different name, but I didn't really care for that one. She did, and they changed it to Southern Lane. Commissioner Young, anything you want to say about that?
Yeah, this is a private road off of Hoborn, um, in precinct three, they have large acre tracts, but they needed it for addressing purposes, um, like I said, they gave us some, uh, colorful names, and we, uh, picked Southern Lane.
All right, so is that a motion?
Yes.
Second.
A motion by Commissioner Young, submitted by Commissioner Cooper, any discussion? Anybody wants to see those names, they can go to the agenda on our website and click on item number twelve where it says, "Request", and you can see those names. Any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
You've gotten curious.
Motion passes. Well, the name they wanted us to adopt was Have It Your Way. And that's why we have this sitting up here. There was another one that I'm not gonna say, but y'all can see it.
Yeah, it's on your.
Yep, send your package to. All right. Item thirteen, consider approval of request by Melinda Harrington, human resources director, to authorize the county judge to sign the two thousand twenty-three County Choice Silver Retiree Medical Program renewal offered by Texas Association of County Health and Employees Benefits Pool. Any, uh, anything you want to say, is this a renewal?
Yes, sir, it's just a renewal, it doesn't affect the county in, uh, in any way.
Thank you very much, I have a commi- I have a motion by Commissioner Cooper and a second by Commissioner Young, any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Item fourteen, considering possibly authorize the purchasing agent to solicit bids for materials and emotions for all Roden Bridge precincts.
So, no.
Second.
A motion by Commissioner Kirkendall, submitted by Commissioner Cooper, any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Item fifteen, considering possibly authorize the purchasing agent to solicit qualification statements for engineering services pertaining to the Community Development Block Grant Mitigation Program, also known as CDBG MIT. If approved, appoint a committee to evaluate the middles received and make a recommendation to commissioners' court, and consider adding two new members to the committee to evaluate the middles received concerning qualification statements for the grant administrator and manager for the same project.
So, no.
A motion by Commissioner Kirkendall, submitted by Commissioner Cooper. Who are the two names that you wanted to add to, or that I asked you to add to the, uh, other committee?
Cindy Mason of Roseville Acres and Rob Star of Luntland.
And then, uh, can you read the other three names so that we have all of them for both committees?
Yes, sir. Commissioner Young, Clay Linder, and Amanda Holland.
Thank you very much. Commissioner Kirkendall, is that good?
Yes, sir.
Just give a second?
Yes, sir.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. I believe yesterday was the last day to comment on the method of distribution through the planning commission, so we should see that final law come out, uh, and it will be voted on at the planning commission on the thirty-first at ten a.m. After that, I think you'll start opening these, uh, qualification statements around the eight.
Yes, sir.
And then the committee will meet soon thereafter, and hopefully we'll have, uh, both of these ready for our last meeting in September. Does that sound right to you?
Yes, sir.
All right. Any other discussion? Item sixteen, considering possibly approve a change in the scope of GLO CDBG-dr project number two zero dash zero six six, dash zero one four dash C two six six from acquisitions as previously approved by the court to buyout of properties due to program changes within the Texas General Land Office as requested by Misty Sims' purchasing agent. Um, I had asked the GLO for some information, they actually just responded to my email about five minutes before ten this morning, and really, I don't think we're ready to tackle this just yet. If y'all like to discuss it, we can. If not, I'm gonna recommend that we table it and move on, and we'll bring it up later. A motion by, uh, Judge McDaniel to table, submitted by Commissioner Kirkendall. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. That was easy. Item seventeen, consider approval of request by Misty Sims' purchasing agent to authorize the county judge to sign Amendment Four to fee agreement between Harden County and Jordan Services for appraisal services relating to FEMA Flood Mitigation Assistance Program that we call FEMA, or FMA twenty-eighteen.
So, no.
Second.
A motion by Commissioner Cooper, submitted by Commissioner Roberts. What is the change being made there?
We had an amendment for FMA seventeen, but not for eighteen, so we're just giving one copy here.
Thank you very much. Any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Item eighteen, consider approval of request by Commissioner Allen Roberts to authorize the purchasing agent to solicit bids for overlaying approximately seven hundred and thirty feet on North Canal Lane and approximately five hundred forty-two, forty-two feet on Taylor Lo- Taylor Lane located in precinct four.
So, no.
Second.
A motion by Commissioner Young, submitted by Commissioner Cooper, any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Item nineteen, consider approval of request by Sharon Whitley, health director, to submit multiple grant applications associated with the health inspector for the NEHA-dash FDA Retail Flexible Funding Model, RFFM, Grant Program for two thousand twenty-three, no matches required. Is Miss Whitley still here? Is, are these the, are these the same grants we already have, you're just applying for the two thousand twenty-three version of the same grants?
Yes.
All right.
Second.
Second.
A motion by Commissioner Roberts, submitted by Commissioner Young. Any discussion?
Will, um, will that grant pay money to the auditor's office to audit that?
No.
They've hired a financial person over there who is currently working with auditor's office to get up to speed, so it will hopefully take some work off the auditor's office, but it is taking more time than everybody would like. But it's in work in progress, is that right? And you agree? Okay. Anything else? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Item twenty-one, discussion only, if any item not on the agenda without taking any action. Is there a member of the court that has a discussion item?
Yes, I did like to make the, uh, public aware that I've requested a special meeting for next Monday at nine a.m., for an item that has already been approved that we need to relook at.
Yes, sir.
Isn't that what we're bringing on nine a.m.?
Yes, sir, I just want to make sure I got the date out there, so it's August the twenty-ninth at nine a.m. Thank you, Commissioner. Any other official present that has anything they'd like to discuss? Anything at all? Vote to adjourn. A motion by Commissioner Kirkendall, submitted by Commissioner Cooper to adjourn. All in favor?
Aye.
We are adjourned. Hope everybody has a great week. Thank you.